Thank you, everyone, for joining our September 2025 meeting. We will call the meeting to order and we will entertain motions.
I can do that. I move to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussions regarding proposed pending or current litigation, collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the civil service law, and matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation.
Before someone seconds, can I make a friendly amendment? We also want to add the superintendent evaluation to the... Is that a friendly amendment, Adam?
Sure.
Before we second?
Yeah.
Second.
Fantastic. So moved by Adam with the amendment, seconded by Jacob. Any debate, discussion, conversation, question? Fantastic. Tricia, can we make sure the minutes reflect that change as well? All in favor? It passes unanimously. We will be back here as close to 7:00 PM as we can, good folks. Back to the number, we're entering from executive session. The next agenda item is a modification to the agenda, and we, in fact, do have a modification to the agenda. And that is that we will be postponing Agenda Item 11.1, the TST Bosse's presentation, to the September 30th meeting. And so we will hear more about regionalization on September 30th. Any objections to that modification of the agenda or colleagues? All right, so duly noted, fantastic. Which then brings us to our next agenda item, which is the public comment period. We have a number of people who have signed up to speak this evening. A couple of quick things to make sure we understand. By matter of policy, the public comment period is normally scheduled for 30 minutes. After 30 minutes, the board can choose by majority vote to extend that public comment period. We've done it on a regular basis. I don't foresee any problems that happening this evening as well, so we can anticipate that taking place. And then, given some of the ways in which folks signed up for this evening, and I know everyone checked the box that they read Policy 1230, I think it'd be wise just to remind folks of this policy, and that is that each speaker will be permitted to speak for three minutes. Our board clerk, Tricia Beresford, will be the timer. If you go over, I'll try to set a subtle reminder. I'll try to give you a polite way, but the expectation that folks would finish their comments closer, if not before, three minutes. The board cannot and will not permit public discussions involving individual district personnel or students. Persons wishing to discuss matters involving individual district personnel or students should present their comments and/or concerns to the teachers, building administrator, superintendent, the board during regular business hours or via an email. And the expectation is that, obviously, that we are going to conduct ourselves in a civil manner. Obscene language, libelous statements, threats of violence, statements advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. And again, this is all from the policy that we passed a number of years ago that is still in effect for today. So if folks do start to speak about particular persons or individuals, I will try to provide, again, a polite reminder that is outside of what public comment is for. By all means, please feel free to speak about the district or generalities. That is what the public comment period is for. At the end, there is an opportunity for board responses, and some folks who've been following the board for quite some time know that I try to remind people that board meetings are not the best place to engage. Actually, they're not built to engage in a discourse and back and forth. And so, again, while there is the opportunity for board responses, the board will not immediately respond to questions or things of that nature, but we'll do our best to sort of be here and hear what folks are saying to us. I think that's enough of a caveat. Yes, Karen?
I have a question that, given that we have so many people down for public comment in person as well as virtually, that we stick to the three minutes per individual so that when they hear whatever timer system go off, that they respectfully stop at that time because three minutes was enough?
Yep. We'll do our best to make sure that takes place, so we'll try to give some indication when that happens. Does that work? My colleague, Dr. Garrick Blaylock, as the Vice President of the Board, has the unevitable task of reading names. Please miss or give a little bit of grace for any mispronunciations. There is a microphone here. If folks would come down to the microphone, that helps people at home hear what's taking place, as well as the YouTube recording. And you can also, please feel free to correct any mispronunciations that we may have of anyone's name. And so with that being said, Dr. Blaylock?
Yeah, please do. There certainly will be mispronunciations. I received this list 30 seconds ago, so we'll start from the best. Ziana Zazma.
Hi, my name is Seona Shyman, and I am the proud mom of a fabulous 12-year-old daughter who attends Boynton Middle School. I want to speak about the teacher contracts, and I want to start by telling you about a wonderful experience we had in third grade. My daughter has a visual processing disorder. It became inflamed in third grade, and she could hardly see. I sent her to school because she wanted to see her friends, and I didn't know what was going to happen. When she came home, she told me that her teacher had taken tape and put it across in a grid on her desk and given her handheld counters, and she had done her lesson with all things she could touch so that she understood the math just as well as everybody else. This, to me, was a teacher who inspired and taught and helped a student cope with roadblocks. We had other experiences. A teacher that was lost mid-year because she left for a higher-paying job in another district. An entire year that was awash for us because there was a permanent substitute without adequate training. But I want to talk about the good. I want to talk about the experience my daughter had in sixth grade when a wonderfully passionate and trained and experienced teacher inspired and taught my child to read her very first novel, and she finished it on her own time, by her own choice, and before most of the class. I want to talk about the priority I believe we need to set in our budget for attracting and retaining good-quality teachers, well-compensated teachers. I support ITA's teacher contract to attract, retain, good, qualified teachers. At a minimum, we must meet the industry standards for teacher salary, equity, and structured raises. We must support our teachers with appropriate family leave and health insurance and retirement plans. More than AI or computers or apps, what has made a difference in my child's learning and in her life has been good teachers. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jane Cloudman. I've lived in Ithaca for 13 years. I work at Cornell, like many of us. I was distressed to hear that the board was considering and might even vote on an alteration to Dr. Brown's appointment.
No names, please.
Oh, sorry. Without giving the teachers' union in Ithaca a chance to canvas their members, get feedback, and be able to give a considered, thoughtful input to the Board of Education. I've been here to speak to the board before. I fully agree with the comments of the last speaker. I think that we've all... I have numerous friends who have children in the public schools here. And of course, we all went to school, right? We all had teachers. Most of us went to public schools. And we know that not all teachers are great teachers. Not all teachers always do the right thing. But there are... But the majority of teachers are good teachers and well-trained teachers, and some teachers are truly great teachers. And those teachers, we never forget them. They make all the difference in the world. I'm a teacher myself. I was trained as a high school teacher. But I mostly did academic training. I spent most of my adult life teaching things like literature and film and writing. And there's absolutely no way that that can be done by anybody, by a human being, and particularly for children. Children need empathy. They need listening. They need individualized responses. They need human beings to interact with them and help them learn. So I just want to say, I think that the ITA, any needs that the ITA has... Because, oh, the other thing I just want to mention is that we know that this has been going on for a number of years, right? That we've been losing teachers, that some of our schools don't have enough teachers, and that it's very hard for teachers to make it in Ithaca because Ithaca is very, very expensive. Many teachers can't live in Ithaca because of how much money they make. And they do have a union that deliberates and works democratically and tries to hear from all its members. And I think that those people are the people who know the most about our schools and what they need, not just as individuals, but what our education system needs in Ithaca. Thank you.
Excuse me?
We will have three virtual speakers back to back to back.
Hi. Is everyone able to see me and hear me? Sorry, I saw my face on the screen. Is... I cannot hear what everybody says in the room right now or at the moment, but I hope everybody can hear me. Good evening, and I'm a resident at Ithaca. Both of my children are current and students at the Ithaca School District. I'm here today to speak against the motion to approve the proposed amendment to the Superintendent Employment Agreement. While I respect the contributions the superintendent has made to the school district, approving this amendment at this time would be irresponsible and the dismissive of the concerns expressed by the community. Moving forward with the decision now since to the wrong message, it suggests that the board is prioritizing leadership and rewards over the district's urgent, most urgent educational and financial needs. And the district faces financial and academic decline, and improvements must be prioritized. So some of the evidence supporting the above statement is that, like, for the '24 and ' '25 academic year, five SSD schools were officially identified by the New York State Education Department as needing support and improvement, and this is unprecedented, and it indicates a deeper systematic problem. And as of now, just like the two previous speakers have said, the SSD teachers have been working diligently without a contract, and that's something unacceptable. And we would like to see that the teachers would get to what they deserve based on what the dedication they put to our kids. And also, there are other financial issues and the leadership problems. So the reality is that the SSD is facing a lot of challenges, academic, financially, and organizational. And our focus must be addressing these issues for the sake of our students, our teachers, and our community. So approving this amendment now undermines that focus. And from my perspective, I think the SSD urgently needs a new leadership and renewed direction, a transformation that ensure that all of our students, our educators, our community is improved as a whole. Thank you very much.
Does that work? Our apologies, given the way in which our system works, we have to cut the mics off in the room so there's not reverb from the screen. And so we may, at some point in time, especially if folks go over or start to, for lack of a better word, go against what the policy is, I may ask someone to be muted. I want folks to know that in advance. Not, again, trying to stifle conversation in any way, shape, or form, trying to maintain what our policy says. And so we didn't let the last speaker know, but the next two speakers just know that we will not be able to speak to you while you're speaking, and we'll proceed from there. So thank you.
So Aaron Rocco?
Sarah Sherman? You can also kind of come back if need be.
Well, I know the next person isn't in the room.
Okay, so for the time being, we'll check on those other two folks who are virtual. Everyone else is here in person. We'll continue on with those who are here in person.
Catherine Sernera?
Catherine, you have a speech. I saw earlier that you may be on the list twice. Is that correct?
I shouldn't be on the list twice.
My apologies.
No, no. Thank you for checking. Good evening, Catherine Sernera. I am the President of the Ithaca Teachers Association, and I am here tonight to speak to the process for voting on Agenda Item 10.5, the renewal of our superintendent's contract for an additional year, and to ask you to consider tabling any vote to implement to implement a public comment period before making this critical decision. In my role as ITA President, I have learned that strong leadership is 80% talking with the people who you lead and 20% making tough decisions. To that end, I have worked within my own union organization to increase transparency at the leadership level, to enhance clear communication, and to build a culture of democratic decision-making. So early this morning, when people woke up and saw that the agenda for this meeting, which was published late yesterday, had this important issue on it, my phone started ringing, people wanting to know the ITA's response, the ITA's reaction, and calling on us to do something, which poses a huge challenge because I cannot speak with integrity to the collective opinion of the nearly 600 members of the ITA on this topic until I have had the opportunity to talk with them. Our internal ITA bylaws require that any time we take an action that uses the name of the ITA, we vote to approve that action. This requires calling a meeting with written voting items distributed at least one week before a vote, engaging in a democratic discussion of the pros and cons of the voting item, and then holding a vote. This specific period of soliciting feedback allows me to know that when I speak to the will of the majority of my members, I am accurately representing that will with fidelity. I bring this up as a comparison to how the critical decision of whether or not to renew this contract could be made tonight. I assume that this is not the first time the members of the board have seen the resolution that you will discuss tonight. I sincerely hope that there has been a robust discussion about this topic in executive sessions. Still, it's important to remember that all executive session discussions happen behind closed doors and that the taxpayers you represent never have access to those discussions. I've heard in previous meetings, many of you debate whether your election to a seat on the board provides the opportunity to vote based on your own will or requires a process of engaging with your constituents before voting. While I understand that your board directives may not dictate soliciting public comments before voting on an issue of this nature, I believe that you should, and that doing so will help solidify a commitment to listen to the families, staff, and students whom you advocate for in your board seats. Our superintendent's current contract is set to expire at the end of 2028, and you are currently considering a renewal through 2029. So this is not an urgent issue that must be resolved tonight. You could wait two weeks, two months, or even two years to make this decision. That is why I'm calling on you to table this resolution and provide a window for public comment before you vote. Thank you.
Jerome Fong?
Dr. Brown and members of the Board of Education, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Jerome Fong, and I am the proud parent of two kids, an infant as well as a kindergartner at Cuyuga Heights Elementary School. I rise to speak about Agenda Item 10.5 regarding a potential extension of the superintendent's contract until June 2029. I would like to thank the superintendent for his efforts over many years to make our schools more inclusive and equitable. However, as my oldest son begins what I hope will be an illustrious academic career within the ICSD, I have been observing with grave concern the trends in academic performance within the district. Five of our schools, including my sons, have been identified by NISED as in need of improvement. The 2023-24 M-class results on student reading achievement district-wide showed only 55.6% of all students at or above benchmark. Only 28.7% of Black students and 36.5% of economically disadvantaged students were at or above benchmark. That is unacceptable. Moreover, 2023-24 data from NISED showed that only 55% of students in grades 3 through 8 achieved grade-level proficiency in mathematics. In grades 3, 4, and 6, the percentage of ICSD students achieving math proficiency was below the state average. That, too, is unacceptable. In short, my wife and I worry not only about our children's futures, but also about how well the ICSD is preparing all students to be engaged citizens and contributors to society and to realize their potential, especially students from marginalized communities. Tonight, I respectfully ask the board to explain its reasoning regarding a potential contract extension for our superintendent, particularly in light of local reporting circa June 2024, that no extension of the superintendent's current contract beyond its expiration in 2028 would be sought. I believe the data show that students, parents, teachers, and taxpayers in the ICSD would be best served by new leadership after 2028. Going forward, I hope to see this board and district leadership succeed in improving academic performance for all students, supporting and retaining our teachers, and establishing a culture of inclusive excellence, transparency, and accountability. Thank you very much.
Karina Lokenoff? Karina? It's virtual? Oh, virtual, yeah, okay.
Hi, thank you so much for having me. Stop me if you can't hear me. I'm Karina Lokenoff. I'm a parent of a 10th grader at IHS.
She's pills, 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 pills.
Testing, testing, testing. Is it working now? Okay, thumbs up. I see thumbs up. Hi, my name is Karina Lokenoff. I'm a parent of a 10th grader at IHS, and my other kid just graduated from IHS this spring. So I've had children in our schools since 2012, and I've always appreciated the superintendent's efforts to foster a climate of diversity and inclusivity, but unfortunately, there are many other areas where the district is struggling and failing. As part of my job, I'm often asked to tell potential hires about our local area. And when my kids first started school, it was easy to tell newcomers about the amazing schools in our district. Those conversations have gotten more awkward over the years. As of May, five of our schools have been flagged by the state as, quote, "in need of improvement." That's almost half of the 12 schools in the district. Statewide, only one in 10 schools is flagged, so we cannot just pretend that this is due to post-pandemic challenges. Sadly, the data tell us that we are especially bad at supporting our low-income and minority students. Also, we haven't seen much improvement over the last year. According to New York State data, only Enfield Elementary showed improvement. Beverly Martin and both of our middle schools did not show improvement, and Cuyuga Heights was just added as a new school of concern. The district is struggling in other ways. Last year, for the first time in decades, voters failed to pass the initial district budget, leaving us stuck with a rollover budget. Teacher turnover is close to 20%, which is not surprising, given that contract negotiations are stalled. Our teachers are now teaching on an expired contract and without an annual raise, yet the superintendent did not attend the final bargaining session in June. Given all these concerns, I was pleased to learn last year that the superintendent would not seek a contract extension beyond June 2028. He was quoted in the media as saying that he, quote, "would not seek or accept renewal," end quote, and that he was, quote, "not open for an extension if offered by the Board of Education," end quote. He also said that his decision was meant as a, quote, "reset button" on the who, why, and how of education in Ithaca. I wish I could say that I'm surprised that the superintendent is now seeking to extend his contract for yet another year. This feels like we're back in January 2020, when the superintendent first resigned and then reversed his resignation two weeks later. I have no trust in the irrevocable letter of resignation that is said to be included in today's vote. We don't have time for this flip-flop year after year. The superintendent was right last year. The children, teachers, and parents in this district deserve a reset button in leadership, and this reset should come as soon as possible because things are not getting better, they are getting worse. So I'm asking the Board of Education and the superintendent to stand by their 2024 announcement and keep the original end date for the contract at 2028. Thank you so much, and I stand here for many other parents who, when they heard what was going on, said, "Oh, I wish I could make it to the meeting, but I can't. I wish there was more time to give public comments." So if you're going to vote, at least don't vote today. Thank you.
Hi. Yep, my name is Brendan Kuntz. I have kids in DeWitt Middle School and Caroline Elementary School, and I came here to speak on the renewal of Dr. Brown's contract as well, superintendent's contract. Apologies. I came with a lot of kind of the data and the facts that other community members have already spoken on, so I'm not going to rehash it out of respect for everyone's time. But I think that, especially given the current contract situation for our teachers, it feels tone-deaf to me tonight to vote on the extension of the superintendent's contract. And I would personally consider that, how it feels for the teachers, and at least postpone tonight's vote. Thank you.
Megan Fitzgerald?
I deeply appreciate the superintendent's dedication to advancing culturally responsive education and elevating diversity in our district. However, I must express serious concerns about the leadership and the urge the board to consider extending the contract for the following reasons. There are significant and persistent gaps in reading and math achievement that have the biggest negative impacts on our non-white students, as well as those most vulnerable, including students who receive free and reduced lunch, those experiencing homelessness, non-English speakers, and students with disabilities. These students are all failing at alarming rates and have been for years in our district. Half of our school, nearly half of our schools, as been previously mentioned, Beverly J. Martin, Boynton Middle School, Cuyuga Heights, DeWitt Middle School, Enfield Elementary, are all designated as failing schools, according to the state. The district itself has been designated as a target district by the state. The district itself has been designated as a target district by the state. It was devastating to find my son protesting with teachers, beloved teachers that have helped him tremendously the very first day of school when their contract had not been renewed in spite of vehement requests for assistance. Notably, teachers still do not have a contract now, and negotiations were canceled for September, while the superintendent and leadership team are requesting an additional extension. Despite raising these concerns through appropriate channels, I've spoken to the Board on multiple times. There's been no transparent communication or effective intervention plan from the leadership. The current administration's approach to equity is superficial, providing insufficient measurable support tailored to student needs. We cannot continue to have leaders who fail to teach our children, all of our children, how to read and do math and get extensions. Given the ongoing issues and lack of accountability, I not only don't support the contract renewal, I urge the Board to move towards reevaluating the current contract in the best interests of our students and educators. Our district deserves leadership that's transparent, responsive, and committed to meaningful academic and equity outcomes. I remain hopeful we can work together towards lasting improvements and really appreciate your consideration on postponing this vote and opening up for greater consideration. Thank you.
More virtual names, and I'm gonna suggest we try to go through them just to avoid the switching time. So, uh, it's Liza Marone, and then just if she's listening, so she can hear. Next virtual speaker will be Alyssa Collins Zinda.
Hi, good evening. Can everyone see me and hear me okay? Just the nod works. Thank you. Uh, thank you. Good evening, uh, members of the Board. Uh, I am a parent of two students in the district, grades six and 11, who have had their entire academic journey at ICSD. So I have been a parent in this district for more than a decade. That includes before, during, and after the pandemic. So I wanna make sure that everybody notes that I'm speaking from firsthand knowledge. And I, uh, it's hard to follow on the steps of all great eloquent speakers that you've had, Catherine Jerome, Karina, Megan. You've done a fantastic job in expressing what I'm here to express. So I, I will save everyone's time and not repeat all of the data that you have already shared. But I will share that I was also shocked and surprised to find out just earlier today that there would be a vote tonight to extend the tenure of the current superintendent. Not just because the superintendent had publicly committed to not requesting an extension of his contract, but really I wondered why would the Board even consider extending this tenure, knowing that there is strong community opposition. I think that strong community opposition is clear here tonight based on attendance. And I can tell you that a number of conversations with dozens of people who I spoke with today, also encouraging them to participate, make it clear to me that this, uh, community opposition is strong and it's widespread. So I am here today to request the Board to please, uh, either cancel this vote or if you're gonna proceed with the vote, to vote no. Um, and if community opposition isn't enough of a reason, then do it based on the cold, hard facts that are things that all the previous speakers have already very well described in terms of academic achievement across all socioeconomic groups going down. Teacher retention at an all-time low, teachers without a contract, and ICSD being listed as a target district with failing schools. You know, the list goes on, and I would take definitely much more than three minutes to go through it all. But I think you all know and agree that there's a lot of work that needs to be done here and that our community is really eager for new leadership. And as such, has made great efforts to bring new talent to the Board. Look around you right now. And so we know our teachers, our children, and our community all deserve better leadership. So please help us to keep taking the steps in the right direction this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Um, I just wanted to say thank you to, uh, Liza and all the other speakers. Um, I echo everything that you just said. I was very surprised in the middle of my workday, uh, today to find out that this had been added to the agenda for tonight. And, um, sorry, I'm trying to start my video. There we go. I, without a public comment period specifically, but I think that public comment has been going on for several years, um, at this point. And, uh, I would like to, if a vote must happen tonight, and I don't think that it does, uh, I would urge the Board to vote no on this. I have two children in the district, one in ninth grade at LACS and another in fourth grade at Bell Sherman. Um, they, too, have had their entire academic careers in ICSD. We were thrilled when we were moving to Ithaca to find out, um, what a fantastic reputation Ithaca City School District had, um, as we were committed to sending our children to public education. But at this point, I feel like Ithaca is coasting on a reputation of quality that has not been accurate in quite some time. Um, and in no way is this a reflection on the amazing teachers they have had, uh, throughout their academic careers at Bell Sherman and LACS. I am also a former district employee, um, and a friend of many current employees. So the, the colleagues that I've had that helped me get my career off the ground, there, there are a lot of amazing people at ICSD. But top leadership is not part of that. Um, I feel that it has been, he has been unresponsive to concerns from teachers over the years, uh, and he's broken the trust of the community in, in many cases. Uh, to extend his contract now, when hard-working ICSD teachers have been working on an expired contract and, uh, negotiations are yet to finish, uh, for that, I think that is an absolute slap in the face. So I would urge you again to vote no on extending this contract and instead consider if there are any ways that we can shorten it. Thank you.
I move to extend the public comment period for another 30 minutes.
Second.
Moved by Adam, second by Emily. Debate, discussion, conversation. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. We will continue on for at least another 30 minutes, and then we'll revisit again.
The next name is Justice Sarah. I'm gonna guess.
Hi, I'm actually here reading on behalf of one of the deans of the colleges up at Cornell University.
Is the person named?
The person is not named.
We, um, had a policy, and my apologies for not beginning, that we don't accept anonymous statements.
Okay, I can name the person. Peter. We should not accept a reward underperformance in our school district. It is clear that performance is not improving in our schools. Quite the opposite. We are going backwards. Going forward, we need a su-, uh, district who is, or superintendent, who is committed to providing as many opportunities for as many students as possible to excel, who will partner with parents to bring more resources into our schools, and who will make the max, who will take maximum advantage of the other resources that exist in our community. If we want to be a community that values success, then we should not reward underperformance at the top. Thank you.
Wes Pan?
My name's Wes Pan. I have two children in Ithaca City School District, uh, both in Caroline. And I appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak to the Board. I am unprepared, um, so I'm just gonna say what I have to say. I read this article at six o'clock today in 14850 and felt I had to come down here and speak at this Board meeting. So I rushed down here. Um, and I think this whole vote and amendment to extend any of the executive team, including this guy's contract till 2029, is a failure of this Board to the public and the taxpayers in Ithaca. Everyone is eager for his removal. I feel you should buy out his contract and get rid of him sooner. A lot of people can't stand that idea, but this is the got-to-change. There's a failure of leadership in the school. Five schools are on the New York watch list. All the facts that were, uh, spelled out today, this evening, um, you know, it's, it's upsetting, and that's what's gonna draw this public's attention. We need change. Extending this contract because of construction seems like a ridiculous answer, uh, to, uh, to pursue. I didn't know the executive team was swinging hammers and screwing in boards, but I'm sure you could have an assistant superintendent or somebody by 2029 changed and ready to handle construction. I mean, if that's why you're extending this contract, it's, it's, it's a s- silly excuse. You could see and feel the tension and how we need change. We need these ITA contracts. The teachers need contracts before you could settle any of this stuff anyway. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Ben Hutton?
Got my timer going. Good evening. I come as a highly concerned citizen taxpayer and, most importantly, father of three biracial children in the district at DeWitt and Northeast. I was hoping to spend the evening with those children, and they were sad that I had to be here. But we agreed that speaking out on this was of the utmost importance. We moved to Ithaca in 2016, and we chose to live in ICSD because of its academic reputation. It turns out that was a bad choice. We expected our kids to be safe in a district that prides itself on a culture of love. But instead, that district's academic and disciplinary policies have led to our oldest son being diagnosed with an anxiety disorder. I wanted him to be here tonight to tell you himself the semester of hell that he went through last year, the tears, the stress, because some of his classes were teaching him nothing, and he was sitting there bored out of his mind in his own head. And other classes, well, usually those same ones, were out of control because the teachers could not discipline their kids. They were not allowed to. But the nature of his anxiety disorder means he can't turn on a dime and show up at a last-minute board meeting because you just threw something on the agenda. With all five of these schools on the TSI CSI list, this district has clearly struggled academically in ways that districts across the state have not. Listen to the state data. We are not meeting the needs of either our marginalized students or our high-achieving students. Who are we actually serving well? Listen to the anecdotes, the consequences of the lack of effective discipline, the consequences of the lack of the academic rigor, the consequences of leaving our teachers high and dry without a contract, so that turnover is sky-high. I'm glad to hear that the district is involved in multiple strategic initiatives, but that is the reason to clear the decks now, get new leadership focused on those strategic initiatives. That made me more want new leaderships, not less want new leadership. You have time. You have time. Find a way to make this happen. And I bet you that new leadership would actually even lead to institutions like Cornell being willing to commit more money to the district. You want their money? Why would they give you money to throw it away after failed policies? No, you need their money. You need new leadership. And then I bet you, you'd have a much better ask to get Cornell money and other institutional money that could be coming in here. And by the way, you extend this contract, I bet you that that capital project is gonna get voted down because you're gonna have people so pissed off. If retirement, that's the Reddit rumor right now, if retirement at an appropriate age that certain retirement benefits are available, negotiate for that, right? Hire a new superintendent, put that person in the deputy spot, turn the current superintendent role into more of a figurehead. Let the deputy in the board chart a new course forward. If half the rumors that we hear are true, now's the time for serious change. The Board cannot take proper action in its contract negotiations. The Board will continue to see incumbents voted out year after year. Figure this out. Integrity requires it. Thank you.
Jordan Clemens?
Hi, my name is Jordan Clemens. Uh, I reside in the city of Ithaca. Uh, my family lineage goes back in this, uh, county, um, all the way back to the 1830s, where my fam, my ancestors escaped a plantation in Maryland and found themselves here, and we've been residing here ever since. I was gonna sit up here and, and, and discuss, uh, some things regarding addressing some of the issues within our communities as far as the underserved and marginalized communities. I founded a nonprofit called Unbroken Promise Initiative, which is a grassroots revitalization nonprofit, addressing barriers to access, education, and equity. And I wanna discuss, or I wanted to discuss some of the programs that we had done. We just finished up a pilot that was four years long where we specifically targeted ninth graders during that time, and we were able to, uh, get transformation from each of those ninth graders and get them engaged and address some of the absenteeism, some of the social and emotional underdevelopment, and some of the lack of engagement that they were, uh, having within our school district. But the tension is so thick tonight. What I really wanna, you know, shift to is, um, you know, the history. With me being, having such a lineage of history in this area, I could really speak to, and I've been speaking to strongly, the systemic and institutional oppressive results that we've been getting specifically for Black and Brown, low-income community here in our county, as well as the city of Ithaca. Um, what we've found is that, you know, it's not just a, uh, uh, an attack on, you know, one administration. This is, there has been a struggle systematically and institutionally across a long line of people who have been in leadership. And the specific target marginalized people, as far as Black and Brown, low income, that is not a new issue. It was here before the current administration. It was here, it's gonna be here after, unless we as a community, as a local society, truly commit to doing what aligns and tailored to the environmental issues that we have going on in the city of Ithaca. There is a misalignment culturally that truly leaves out the underserved Black and Brown community. I have raised three kids, or raising three kids. Two are in college. One was the first, you know, basketball, you know, Division One basketball player ever to go Division One out of Ithaca. The other one is a daughter. She graduated at the age of 16, a year early, out of the school district. And there was some concerns with being able, being from the low income myself, getting to that point. And I could identify specifically some of the institution and systemic issues. This is a much bigger issue than the current administration, and I'm here to really help address so that we could ground ourselves as a community to come together to really cohesively and holistically and comprehensively address the issue. Thank you.
Farah Riley?
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Tara Riley. I am a taxpayer, a resident. I've lived here since 2005, and I am raising my three children here. They are seven, twelve, and fourteen. And they are, two of them are in the Ithaca City Schools, and one is not because of a lot of the chaos that we've been seeing in Cuba Heights. The, I wanted to come here tonight to reiterate many of the things, and I'm not going to repeat them, the data that we've heard, the, not only about the schools that are in need of improvement, but then also the teacher turnover. And I think it's important to note with all of these data, it's not just that the data are bad. It's not just, what I hear in response from the district leadership is, oh, the tests are bad. Why, it's, if every district were in the situation we were in, then maybe we could talk about the tests not being good tests. But if our district is in a particularly worse situation comparatively, to me, that signals a major problem with the leadership if they are unwilling to acknowledge that there is a problem. And for the same reason, teacher turnover, so it's not just that our teacher turnover is high, and we hear, oh, teacher turnover is high everywhere since the pandemic. Well, teacher turnover in Ithaca is 50% higher than the national average and 28% higher than the state average, so it is worse here. And I put this all down to leadership. Under the current superintendent's leadership, we've seen a disastrous decline in student achievement. The teachers are leaving at alarming rates. Morale is low. Trust is eroded. The data, the lived experience of educators and families alike paint a clear picture. This administration has failed to deliver on its most fundamental promises. We are failing our children. Our schools are failing our children. Just last year, the community was told we would begin a reset and a fresh start to rebuild what we've lost. This was not just a hope, it was a commitment. Extending the contract now undermines that promise and signals to students, teachers, and families that their voices and struggles are being ignored. I urge you to vote down this resolution, and failing that, I ask you to table it tonight. Thank you.
Liesel Margolia?
Hi. My name is Liesel Margolia. I'm very impressed, because that's a weird name. I am a parent and taxpayer, two kids, 10th grade and 6th grade, I had to think about that. I first want to just say this is my first board meeting, and I'm here because, although I've been voting for a long time, and I really appreciate the job that you guys do as a board, I think it's incredibly complicated, and I don't think I am supposed to be able to vote on everything that you're voting on. Like, we're electing you to do this job. So I did listen, though, of like what you guys are asking us to do, citizens and parents, and it's to show up to these meetings and to find out what's going on and to ask questions. And so that's what I'm trying to do. But the way that I found out about this, now unfortunately, I'm not on social media at all, so maybe that's the problem, but I hope that's not the problem. I want to say that I hope and expect that when these big issues come up, there is a different way or a better way of communicating them to us so that we can discuss them. I know I heard earlier that this is not a good format for discussing these issues, so tell me what it is. Like, I'm trying to respond and do what we're supposed to do, and I'm not even going to address the main tense issue, but I will reiterate the, or echo the sentiments of everyone that I've had my heart broken by wonderful teachers leaving this district. You know, in broad strokes, we just want to know how to hold people accountable. Like, if we're going to say these are the metrics we want to evaluate our success, then tell us what those are so that when they come in, we can say, we're doing a good job, or we're not doing a job. And, you know, our teachers staying, our teachers leaving, I know, everything to us is in anecdotes and broad strokes. So we trust that you guys are doing your jobs, and I want to help and support you, but I feel like we need a better way to do that, because finding out from one person that there might be a meeting, and then we came at six, and it wasn't until seven, and I don't know what I'm doing. I'd really like to know what I'm doing, because we're ready to support you and get the help that you need, but I think there has to be a better way to make giant decisions like this. That's it. Thank you.
That is it?
No. I have two, is, one just says Shelby?
I'll keep this short. I'm very grateful to live in a community with so many well-researched, kind-hearted, and very eloquent community members. In brief, I would echo in particular ITA president's request that the vote on the extension of the superintendent's contract be at minimum delayed until appropriate public comment can be received from all parties, even just the people you see in this room. This is huge. There are even more people who have opinions that I'm sure their anecdotes and other data that they have, you would be interested in hearing. And I'm also going to echo the concern that ITA teachers have been working out of contract and that they deserve in particular step in lane. That's it.
We had one more name virtually, is that correct?
There's some virtual, but there's also a Gary Isaacs.
Okay. Not on this list, but, yep.
Hi, I'm Gary Isaacs, resident of Ithaca and also a teacher in the district. And, yeah, a lot of my colleagues came to me today saying that the news for renewing the superintendent contract seemed a bit rushed, and I would have to agree with them. It, you know, six months wasn't enough to build a contract with the ITA, but this seemed to be put forth within the past 24 hours, and people are wondering why. It doesn't seem like there's been enough time for people to really weigh in, like everybody has mentioned here. There's been a lot of impassioned, you know, sentiment and statement of, you know, regarding this issue. So I just urge you also to hold off on the vote till people can get more information, and you can hear more of what the rest of the city has to say. Thanks.
And the last speaker is virtual, is that correct?
That's correct.
Our microphone's back on. Thank you, everyone. There will continue to be different ways to engage with the board on this issue and other issues, which we'll call up with, but first, we bring us to our next agenda item, which is board responses.
I'll just say briefly, yeah, I mean, thank you, everybody who came tonight, came to speak. I think public comment is a very good way. One of the ways, there's a lot of different ways, but one of the ways to communicate with board members. Sometimes it can be a little bit anxiety-provoking, you know, getting up and speaking, especially when other people are watching. I think we, as board members, can appreciate that as well. On the other side, so again, just want to thank everybody who came and spoke, and we hear all of your comments, and they'll be taken into consideration. Thanks.
I have a couple things to say. First off, Jordan, I want to commend you for the work that you do. I mean, I know you, I know you're a nonprofit, and it's some of the most like, you know, admirable, most important work that we can do as a community, so I just wanted to acknowledge that, and thank you. I do, I do believe in accountability, and, you know, it's hard for me to sit here and, you know, allow Dr. Brown to take all the blame for the negotiations, because, you know, as a board member, I am responsible for part of the ITA negotiations. So I just want to take accountability. I don't want him to just get thrown onto the bus. And I do want to say, like, it is such a difficult situation, because, you know, as a board or, you know, as a community, we're constrained by budgets, and, you know, those budgets get voted on. So, you know, there is a limited amount of money, and it's difficult. So, and I think everyone on this board, and I think, including Dr. Brown, would love to pay teachers more. And, you know, there's, there's, there's limited funds. I mean, that's the way it works, and unfortunately, you know, we live in a, we,
My apologies. The, I've tried to say this before. We don't unfortunately get into an exchange. We can have this after the meeting. I appreciate the comments and the sentiments.
But, yeah, and unfortunately, we live in a community where, you know, we get less back from the state and from the federal government because we're technically more affluent. So, you know, there are some communities that might get 90% of their budget funded, you know, from outside sources, and ours comes from, you know, taxpayers and taxpayers vote. And again, I don't think there's a single person on this board that does not want to pay teachers more, but there's, there's a limit. So I just wanted to step in and take accountability, because it doesn't feel comfortable for me to have, you know, Dr. Brown taking all the heat. So with that said, I also don't feel comfortable moving forward with this vote, you know. I would prefer to have more time. I think, you know, I don't know if my numbers are correct, but I see 16 people that said, you know, no to moving this forward, and I didn't hear one person saying that they do want to, you know, move forward the contract extension. I think, you know, we have a responsibility to not necessarily make our decisions based on the community, but we have a responsibility to listen to the community. And, you know, there's an overwhelming consensus that people want either more time or they don't feel comfortable. And, you know, I personally, you know, would like more time, and if we don't have more time, I don't feel comfortable. So that's, that's all I had to say. So, and I do appreciate everyone taking the time to come out and, you know, voice your opinions and give us your perspective, because it is important and it does matter. So, thank you.
Additional board responses?
I also just want to say thank you. I'm going to say now that, like, I'm sure all of the board members want to say thank you. Sometimes we feel silly one after another, just coming to the mic just to say thank you. So for any of my board members who don't want to follow me up with just that piece, you can just like wave and be like, I'm saying thank you too. So we are very, very grateful to everyone being here and providing their input. And I, and I do feel and believe strongly that hearing from the community, I wish we heard from much more of the community. Liesel, I, did I get that right? I, I appreciate you coming up and saying, I don't really know, and I don't really know what I'm supposed to be doing. And I think it's, you're right that what we want, or I will speak for myself right now, that what I wish was happening was that I was hearing from community members all the time. I know that Sean sometimes cautions me of that, because I could be inviting 5,000 people to reach out, but I kind of wish that were true, and so I very much appreciate people coming out and speaking. There are a number of ways to get in touch with us individually, the whole board, through websites. There are many, many ways, and so feel free to be in touch and reach out and really, really appreciate it. Ziona, I told myself I was going to remember how to say that, but also just want to say, like, I, 90% of the feedback that we get all the time is like negative, I would say. And it's so nice to hear, where is she? Is she still here?
She went home.
She went home. Okay. Well, I'll just say to everyone else, like, it's so nice to hear somebody come up and just talk about how life-changing teachers have been for their, for their children. And I'm just so grateful for the opportunity to hear those stories and share in that delight with them. So I appreciate her and encourage others to do that, whether it's about teachers or other positive experiences you also have in ICSD. So appreciate that. I also, I hear, I wish that there had been more time. I think that it is really important for the public to be able to come out and share their, share their thoughts, especially on a vote that feels so meaningful and impactful. I'm going to need some guidance on process here, but I am happy to move, to make a motion to table.
Recommend we do that when the agenda item is there.
Okay, so when it, that's why I need direction. So right when it comes up, I will do that. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, I'm agreeing with you. Thank you. And I, sometimes I question us, so as community members, and how we're stating some numbers, like, community, strong community opposition. We had about 17 to 20 people speak today. That's not 100% or near 100% of our community. So let's encourage our community members, yes, to participate in public comment. But, and I, I'm always cautious, and looking to Sean too, cautious in saying certain things to be careful of, like, if I personally were getting a evaluation or anything like that about my contract, would I want everyone to publicly comment? Or is it to the board that's represented that I report to and all? So, but let us proceed with caution with some things and certain items that we said were data and factual may not necessarily be factual. So I know quite a few people will disagree with me, but, and especially there was a question is, how is ICSD engaging all students to succeed? And let us look at our all students, and where are all our students? Our students that may have, maybe students from a family that speaks another language and how they are being accommodated here. Students, we heard from a parent with a student that, how that student turned around, shifted as a result of an educator and the impact that educator had. And thank you very much, Jordan, for sharing about the target pilot, the initial sharing out, because I know that you would probably want to come and engage with the board, engage with our curriculum committee and others, to just, so that we can hear more about the impact that pilot made with those ninth-grade students and how it turned things around. And, and thank you for sharing about your history in this community, because your family history may outlive all of our family history who are currently here. So as community members, as board, a board meeting, we hold these board meetings twice monthly, and we hold committee meetings throughout the month. They're always online. Announcements are there. We don't want to inundate people in email, so we're hoping that people take the initiative and look up when the meetings are scheduled. So, thank you.
I will do what Emily asked us not to do and also reiterate the thank you and the gratitude for folks to come out. So just greatly appreciative, and no, folks, listen. Doesn't mean we may agree. Doesn't mean that folks are going to get what they want. I don't know what that looks like or what's going to happen. I just know that folks do pay attention and take it in. We would not also be giving up our, I don't see Ben anymore. Ben may still be here. The number of Tuesdays that I give up and the number of things that I miss with my family, or everyone does, it's a commitment, one that we sign up for, so please don't mistake what I'm saying. But we recognize what it means for folks. Sorry, Ben, now I said, I'm looking right at you. We recognize what it means to not be home with our families and our loved ones. So if there's no other board responses at this time, we will move to student reps. Folks should know, before we get there, I'm going to ask you all to introduce yourselves again one more time, so our community will know. Last year, the New York State Department of Education mandated that every school district in New York State, every public school district in New York State, have at least one ex-official member. I am proud and pleased to say that, as a district, we've had student reps, I want to say for quite some time now, and we feel blessed that we have student reps from both LACS and AC, or Ithaca High School. I'll say LACS and ACS. Sorry, Dr. Dave, my apologies. So please introduce yourself so the community knows, and we're so happy that you could join us here today. I'll say LACS and ACS. Sorry, Dr. Dave, my apologies. Um, so, uh, please introduce yourself so the community knows and we're so happy that you could join us here today.
Um, my name is Jing Ying and I'm a junior at Ithaca High School. I play lacrosse and run the cross-country team. And it's my honor to be here to represent like the Ithaca High School student community. Um, today I would be looking at sports report. First of all, the cross-country team competed at Corning's two weeks ago. The boys' team finished first, third and fifth, while the girls' teams took the top six spot. This Saturday, the both team will can be at Queensberry's pre-state race. And secondly, um, boys varsity soccer had a three O record right now and boys JV soccer had a five O record right now. And both girls and both girl JV and varsity soccer team and the big win against Union Call last week. Furthermore, the, the football team will play its first game this Friday under the, like Morocco Stadium. And additionally volleyball, girls volleyball team won the Corning tournament championship last week. Lastly, the tennis, the girl tennis team's on three O street right now, held by a major win against Binghamton right now. Also, also one of our board rep Jing Ying is not here because she actually have a tennis match today. So, yeah, thank you guys.
Uh, hi, I'm Judah Kishnik. I met some of you last June, but I'm a newly elected rep. I'm a junior at IHS, vice president of our student council, uh, track and field athlete, model UN secretary, and I'm just happy to be here to represent our students' thoughts this year. So first off, I want to bring up the phone ban law that was put into effect recently. Uh, in case some people don't know, the district has provided cyber pouches for high school students, which are cell signal blocking pouches that provide students a way to stay engaged and off their phones in, in school. So I'd like to let you all know uh, that I'm planning on releasing a survey to gather teacher and student opinion and feedback on the cyber pouches and allow, uh, so as to allow all of you to support teachers and students next year when the pouches are redistributed. So I should have that by next, uh, the next time I meet. So as the school year starts back up, uh, the Board of Education student reps are also starting off our social media page, uh, which is at IHS reps to board on Instagram. Uh, this will provide another avenue for communication with students. And we're also releasing a feedback forum for students to provide, uh, direct feedback to us representatives. And that'll also be on our Instagram. So, uh, for you guys, please expect more direct student communication this year and more specific feedback from our student reps. Uh, additionally, we'll be providing information to IHS tatler to report on what the student reps are doing at these meetings and how the meetings are going in general. So next I do have a bit of feedback for the, uh, board already regarding website blocking. I understand that YouTube has been blocked in order to decrease in-school distractions, but I'm wondering if that could be changed. Uh, I, a lot of teachers use YouTube for educational purposes. Or recommend that students use YouTube to study at home, as I know I have. Uh, if we're aiming for equity, this is a decision that supports, uh, equity. Students who have personal computers to watch educational videos at home are at a large advantage over students who only have access to Chromebooks on which YouTube is blocked. I'm sure there's something we can do about this, whether it's unblocking it only for high school students or unblocking certain channels or whatever it may be. Lastly, for me, Lily's going to speak on this more, but as a board representative, I feel the need to reiterate what she's going to say uh, in more detail than I am and truly represent the students that we serve. The students want their teachers paid. Uh, we recognize how much hard work our teachers put in every single day and how much time they take out of their lives to serve students. These teachers should not put so much work in only to make so little that they can't even live in the city. Please find the money to pay our teachers. Thank you.
Uh, hi, my name is Lily Cowder. I'm a junior at IHS and I'm president of the Communications Club, vice president of orchestra, a member of student council and play on the softball team, among other things. Initially today, I was going to talk about the poor ventilation systems in the music classrooms because we had a problem with mold in the orchestra classroom. I know that recently got fixed in one area, but this has been an ongoing issue. However, it's, I feel it's more important for me to talk about the ITA. Um, as we all know, there's been a big teacher turnover. On behalf of the students, we value having fun and engaging teachers that make us want to learn. A teacher can make or break a classroom environment. There's been subjects I never took interest in that became something I love to learn about because of a teacher. Not just because of a good teacher, but because of a consistent one. From my pers- perspective, there seems to be so much emphasis on restricting technology use. However, students need reasons to want to go to school and we can't keep expecting students to be okay. Uh, with teachers that don't have any contract and they have no reason to stick around for more than a year, which contributes to overuse of technology or lack of interest in learning. Classes are filled to the brim and students cannot get some of the tailored learning they need. Unfortunately, we live in an area and economy that's expensive and we understand that. But teachers need a livable salary, consistent healthcare and a reasonable family leave, among other things. It's not rocket science to understand. We cannot go back and see our old teachers every year like we used to be able to. I can't emphasize enough that teachers' working conditions are student working conditions. It is not just teachers who are affected by the contracts or lack thereof right now. Even though we're all kids, we are well aware and quite opinionated about the situation going on with our teachers. I know a concern is not having a money, having the money. However, there's a teacher in the union who's done the math and it is feasible. Lastly, voting on something like this so hastily, especially as the negotiations are going on, frankly seems disrespectful. And as others have stated, we need change. Everyone speaking here tonight is here because we know that what is trying to get brushed under the rug is not right. Thank you.
All right. Hi. Um, let me switch tabs real quickly. Thank you. I'm Emily. Um, I'm back here for the second time. I'm an LACS senior. Um, I, it is nice to be back. This was amazing. This public comment section was longer than I've ever seen before and really, really passionate. So I was excited to see and hear all of this really weighty discussion going on. And I want to appreciate something you just said before I forget it. Um, the, the not necessarily great or outstanding teachers, but consistent teachers. And I think that is, that is what like the, the, just what we need, you know? Um, and I really appreciated that little bit of insight. Um, okay. Uh, are we, okay, okay. It seems like you guys gave your spiel, right? Am I right? Okay. So I'll get into mine. There are lots of new faces at our school this year, uh, staff and students. I got to know some of our new sixth graders during new student orientation on the first day, which older kids at our school run as an introduction into our school's sort of multi-generational learning appeal. Uh, the next day, everyone returned and met in classes and family groups for the first time and that was really nice. Um, on the way to school this morning, I was thinking a lot about everything that goes into getting the school year up and running. Um, and it is absolutely astounding the amount of work that people put into my day. Uh, it's transportation staff, coordinators, bus drivers behind the wheel and over the radio as I rode the bus. Ground staff mowing lawns, our cafeteria staff member preparing breakfast as I walked in, our custodian already cleaning up a spill. And then all of the incredible people teaching my classes. Uh, and that's all the work that's visible to me in a day. Uh, so I want to give huge thanks to everybody who has devoted countless hours to pulling off a phenomenal start to the year. And I want to say also just along this, while we're talking about our teachers, um, I appreciate my teachers so much as people. Um, that is one of my favorite things about LACS actually is I, I, I looked forward to seeing my teachers just as much more than seeing my classmates, no offense. Um, and that doesn't necessarily make me a total teacher's pet. So, yeah, it was, it's just having that relationship is so, so vital to the kind of education that I have been blessed to receive here at, in ICSD and in LACS specifically. And that cannot happen when my teachers are being sort of pushed out by, um, really sort of offensive wages. So, yeah, I would like to say that we would like all students are in favor of a fair contract for our teachers and for all of the work that people can do to make that happen. Uh, and finally, the phone ban. I thought it would be a hotter topic than it's been so far. Uh, I don't personally have a phone, so it hasn't been any change for me, aside from the smug looks I can trot out every time somebody else complains about it. I'm actually really impressed by how smoothly LACS has been seeming to adjust to it. Uh, and it's been really nice to walk down a phone-free hallway. Um, so I'm curious to see how this plays out as we move further into the year. And I'd be curious to see what everybody thinks about the pouches as well.
Hi there. Hi there. I'm a boat, uh, so I've been a, I'm a sophomore at LACS. I've been here, I've been there the whole time, uh, as in through middle school. Um, and I, I really want to start off my section with something that me and from what I've heard, almost the entirety of the LACS community believes is one of the most important things that I could talk about, our support for the ITA. The people in our community believe how important it is, how important a contract is for numerous reasons, all of which I've heard both in passing, direct conversations from the teachers themselves and even here tonight. Um, the largest include teacher retention, which obviously allows us to have a smooth educational environment, like as you said, consistency. Consistency incredibly important. Uh, another thing in create, creating a better quality of education. Teachers can focus on the classes they teach if they are not so worried about not, about not being able to afford where they live. As you said, Lily, no offense to reiterate what you said word for word. Teacher working conditions are student wording, working conditions. Now, on a lighter note, one of the things the students of our school really pushed for last year and years previous was getting some more input into the classes that they took and to work with our core like LACS philosophies in that way. And the way they, so the way they've done that is they've formed a so-called curriculum committee um, that created a system that worked for everyone. With that said, we have quite a few new courses being offered this year. Some of these include neurobiology, music theory, marine bio or oceans, as it is called, as it is officially named, Latin American literature. And last year, similar courses were created. Uh, we had, uh, revolutions and empires. And all of these are being incredibly well received by the student body. And part of that is because they were created by the student body. Thank you.
Uh, hello, I'm Julian. I'm a senior at LACS. I've been here since sixth grade, which is kind of crazy to say. Um, I want to reiterate what Bo said again with the curriculum committee things. All those classes were, uh, suggested by students, voted on by students and then uh, teachers who were interested in that subject made those classes happen. We have even more that are in the pipeline and we hope to really continue doing that in the future. Um, again, I want to talk to you about a little bit more about orientation. So a few years ago, we voted on to change how we did our first two weeks of school to ease more into the school year and to get everything up and running. We do a lot. Uh, this meant having different events, uh, when we'd usually meet in projects, uh, which got underway today. We had various alumni and previous teachers come in to discuss life after LACS, how the school and its philosophies stay with you and to reflect on the multi-generational experiences we've had at the school. And it really, really was a ton of fun. Um, and on Thursday, we're going to be holding a committee and project fair. Again, if you're unfamiliar, we, I know there's a lot of like weird acronyms and everything. Uh, committees at LACS are either services to the school, like helping out with maintenance or gardening or running different school institutions like the Chestnut, our newspaper, which we got up and running this year. Let me know if you guys want to get a copy. Uh, and the school democracy, which I'm personally a part of. Uh, projects are similar to clubs, but they happen during the school day and are far more wide-ranging and any student can really start one on anything. Uh, to share, sorry. Uh, we'll be holding a fair for students to go around and ask questions to the leaders of, of committees and projects and help decide which ones they'd like to be a part of for the upcoming semester. I'm personally helping out again with the agenda committee table, which manages the school democracy. It's something I deeply care about. I've been involved in for quite a while at this point. It's also fair. It's also a great way to interact with a lot of our younger students. Emily was mentioning the orientation. How I was a part of that as well, coming in a day early, meeting the new sixth graders, meeting everybody. One kid told me he was born twenty fourteen and that scared me a little bit, but it was still a lot of fun. Uh, and it's also a great way to help underscore the uniqueness of LACS, which I really enjoy. Um, we'd also really like to thank Keith Harrington, our new principal, uh, formerly of Enfield. We love Keith. He's settling in great. Uh, he's, he's really his first time coming in like with the students. He's been here the summer, but again, it's a different experience. We're very happy. We're super excited to have him. We're also thankful for the smooth collaboration uh, between the community and central administration during his interview process last spring that was condensed and we are very happy with the results. And finally, I know this has been the topic of the night, but I want to reiterate how grateful we are, uh, that everyone that has worked to let us hit the ground running for the school year without a new contract. We, LACS stands with the teachers. We love our teachers dearly and, and I mean that. Gary Isaac's behind me. He's my science teacher. He's known me since I was in sixth grade. He's seen me go from eleven years old to sitting here, speaking to you all. And that's something really special. We, I think we love our, like, we have a different relationship and we want to see our teachers thrive, succeed, both outside of school, in school, from up to, from Keith in the principal's office to Fred, our custodian, who every morning I talk about the Buffalo Bills football team. Like, it's a really deep relationship that requires this contract to be made. So we, as the students, stand with the ITA on getting this contract done. Thank you.
Thank you, student reps. Board responses.
Well, thank you very much, students. And, um, I'm looking forward to hearing more of the direct feedback that you will get from that survey results. And hopefully you could, um, IHS and share with LACS in case they're looking for it. And great to hear about the cell phones. I've been seeing some students either at Wegmans or different places and just asked about the cell phone and they said no issue whatsoever. So I know that there might, may have been some hiccups initially in the first few days. And Emily, impressive, you do not have a cell phone. That is very impressive. So great to hear that. And yes, we do want to see the Chestnut magazine. Thank you.
Uh, well, just wanted to thank everyone again. Um, oh, were you going to say something? You can totally can. Go for it.
Thank you. I just wanted to brag on behalf of, um, one of the seniors who just graduated. Um, she, because of the design of the chestnut, she submitted that to, she got into Berkeley, so that's where she is now. Um, and she's become like the first ever freshman to be put in charge of, um, the like design of the school newspaper. So that's pretty awesome. And it's a great, it's a beautiful newspaper. So you should check it out.
That is very cool. Well, thank you for sharing. And yes, we absolutely would love to see it. Um, and so welcome back, Emily, and welcome to, to everyone else. And thank you for coming so prepared and for sharing such great information. A few little tidbits, just also echoing, um, Karen, that very, very excited to see, um, survey data about the cell phones and not just this once, but like throughout the year, because we know that those kinds of things will, will change throughout. So definitely appreciate you taking that on and also hope pitching to you that you continue to do it throughout the year. Um, I have also been really pleased to hear that it's gotten much more smoothly than I would have expected. And definitely a big shout out to Mary and Carrie as well to help for making that happen. Uh, Lily, just wanted to make sure that you know we very much like opinionated students and so are grateful that you, that you bring that and that you all will bring that throughout the year and share candidly with us. Oh, Judah, also the Instagram page. I think that's very exciting. We keep trying to think about different ways that students and the community members can be reached. And so look forward to checking that out. Um, the curriculum committee sounds so cool and very exciting that you all are able to come up with such, uh, kind of creative uh, learning opportunities and ones that really drive with the students in your school. So thank you for sharing and continue to, you know, continue to share with us how that's going and would love at some point to hear from teachers about, um, about their experiences. Not now though, but would love to, would love to hear more about that. Uh, and finally, I just want to say that, uh, twenty fourteen was a long time after any of us were born. So the fact that it scares you really scares me. So thank you all.
Speak for yourself.
Any other board responses?
I just want to say, like, this is a really, um, this is a tough first day for you all to come in. And so well done and thank you for all your comments. And I really look forward to working with you as, as the year goes on.
Or just, just a quick, uh, follow-up with, um, what Judah said, and we already kind of talked about it. But I think, um, getting the, getting the phone data information is going to be important, um, especially because we sort of talked about the idea of revisiting our cell phone policy, which is very new. Um, so we're going to be trying to get as much data and feedback as we can get and kind of just seeing if our policy is doing well or if we need to tweak the policy. So that will be really effective in just giving us some information for that. So thanks. So thanks.
And not to put this work on our students, but it will be an agenda item on our September 30th meeting to just get a basic sense of how our cellphone policy rollout is happening. So if you have additional information, that'd be great and/or to engage in the conversation as we have that, that time. So thank you very much. Julian, quickly, please.
This is completely just very based on vibes of the school, but I was talking to some teachers about when they've had to tell students to put their phone away. And of the four I've talked to, two said they haven't had to tell it to anybody. One said they had to tell one student and the other said they had to tell me, but it was after 3:30. So, so seemingly, the role at, at least at LACS, I can't speak for IHS, but we've, we've had a lot of fun designing our bags in a lot of ways. So the rollout has seemed to almost be accepted. And it's like, this is the status quo. This is what we're doing now. And that's, like, I don't know if that'll be the continuous statement. I don't know if all teachers would agree with that, but in these first few days, the rollout at LACS has really seemed to have people consider, put it like, or like, put their phones in their bags, in their little pouches and turn off for, turn off for six and a half hours, which, again, hopefully we'll have some data to back that up, but that's the current mentality.
We appreciate that. And we know there's going to be some other feedback and tweaks that teachers and paraprofessionals will happen, other folks as well. So we're looking forward to that and that, that will be taking place. Again, just thank you. Always looking forward to the way in which our students engage. And as you already heard, we expect folks to hold us accountable as well. So appreciate it and we'll keep moving forward as the, the school year goes along. We'll continue on with our agenda. That brings us to our consent agenda and we will entertain motions.
Okay. Sorry, I move, I'm going to move something. Okay. I move to approve all consent agenda items listed in the consent agenda. Consideration of accounts, personnel reports, students, and minutes of previous meetings as presented.
My second.
Moved by Adam, second by Karen. Question, conversation, debate, discussion? Hearing none at the time. We'll call the question, all in favor? The consent agenda is passing unanimously for those who are here. And we're going to take a minute to reach out to our colleague, who's going to join us for the next part of the meeting as well. So I believe Emily's going to do that as we continue. Again, we've had a change to our agenda, so we will hold on to the TST Bosse's presentations until September 30th. It's looking to be a full agenda and we're looking forward to that evening as well. That brings us to agenda item 11.2, which is the NISBA Conference. The New York State School Board Association has an annual convention that a number of board members have attended throughout the years and even presented at throughout the years. And we have funds that are already budgeted for this conference to make available for some board members to attend. And so that's what we see here. This is a resolution to authorize the expenditure of four board members, if I'm not mistaken, to attend this year's annual conference in New York City. Last year was in Albany, so you all got lucky. It was in New York City, that's why I didn't go. So we'll entertain motions.
I move to approve expenditures for attendance at the NISBA Annual Convention, October 23 to 25, 2025, in New York City for the following board members: Madeline Cardona, Erin Croyle, Jacob Schiffern, Emily Workman.
Second.
Thank you, Erin. Moved by Adam, second by Erin. Question, debate, dialogue? Hearing none. Yep, please.
Discussion. I think it's a great idea because NISBA, New York State School Board Association, this is a good opportunity for board members to hear from other school districts. Sometimes our board president and superintendent have even been requested as presenters at this annual convention. I just want to make sure that in case there is anyone that cannot make it, because last year I know something came up and someone could not make it, can we have some alternate or something like that? We're, we're not losing the funds. Because last year, there was a whole discussion about funds being expended on this, where I was in favor of us expending the funds on the training. But just some sort of recoup of funds in case someone cannot make it, that we, is it, is, there's some possibility with NISBA?
There's a deadline of October 10.
Okay.
So...
To confirm, can you speak into the microphone, Chris, as well?
October 10th is the last, is the final day to cancel without, I guess, without losing the money.
Without penalty.
Without penalty. There is a registration fee for NISBA. It's a small fee determined by some people, but we would need to know by October 10.
And hopefully we could slip someone in in case.
Yeah.
I just want to add too, like, some of us have kids, so there are extenuating circumstances. So that's the NISBA, but the hotel is refundable and there are other fees that come up, such as parking. So if that were to happen and there is not an alternative, like, there is fiscal responsibility on behalf of the board and just acknowledge that it's not like a full fee. There's a lot that is refunded if that were to happen. Like, I'm thinking of my own circumstances, like, you know. It happens, right?
All right, any additional discussion? I'll just add, Karen, if I'm not mistaken, you attended last year and you also attended a session on cellphone policy that other districts have done that sort of helped inform and give us some additional research. And so, there's an example where things that are happening in other districts, looking to see what's taking place around the state. Folks attended conversations about electrification of bus fleets. You name it, it's usually, for lack of a better word, the hot topics that are taking place across New York State. And so, everyone that I know who's attended has found it to be extremely beneficial, especially for newer board members to be able to get a better sense of what's taking place at the statewide level. So if there are no additional conversation, then we will call the question. All in favor? All opposed? Any abstentions? Fantastic, the motion passes. The next agenda item is agenda item 11.3, the NISBA Voting Delegate. As part of the NISBA Convention, NISBA is also a legislative advocacy body that advocates at the state level and at times at the federal level. They put together a slate of legislative items that they ask school districts to support and/or yea or nay. And each school district is allowed to appoint a member as the voting delegate for the Ithaca City School District. And so, we are asking if anyone is available. And it's, it's virtual this year, if I'm not mistaken?
It is.
There's an orientation on October 14th. And... Virtual. And I'm, and I'm sorry, and also on October 16th.
Gotcha. So this is not an additional expenditure to the district. This is simply having someone from the district be able to support the Ithaca City School District stance on the NISBA slate of legislative priorities. So do we have a volunteer or would we like to nominate someone to be in that role?
I'm happy to volunteer for that.
And we are happy to accept. Any, can we make a motion then? Would someone be willing to do that?
Yeah, I'll move to appoint Jacob Schiffern as voting delegate at the annual NISBA Convention.
My second.
Moved by Adam, second by Karen. Discussion, debate, dialogue?
Thank you, Jacob.
Yeah.
My pleasure.
Hearing none, we'll call the question, all in favor? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Jacob, as well. This brings us to agenda item 11.4, Central Office Contracts. And we will entertain motions.
I move to approve the amendments to the employment agreements of particular individuals.
Second.
Moved by Adam, second by Erin. Debate, discussion, dialogue, conversation? I say it regularly as someone who's a faculty member, I have no problem with silence. And so I think sometimes silence is the best way to let things sit, to make sure folks have had time to decide if they want to speak. All right, hearing, yep.
I just want to continually extend my appreciation to our central admin staff for all that you do, continue to do and what you're looking forward to as well as ready to take on in the future. And it's, I'm sorry. Then, just to chime in that sometimes, yes, every position is valuable throughout the school district. But when I hear about individuals who may take phone calls at 3:00 AM to either in preparation for the Transportation Department or some issue that's happened with a family and that they have to attend to and, and where their phone is, has to be always near them to be able to action at any given time, I, I just have to extend and say a special thank you and appreciation for the work that you've done and will continue to do.
Any other discussion, debate, conversation? Hearing none, we'll call the question, all in favor? The motion passes unanimously. Brings us to agenda item 11.5, Central Office Contracts. And by way of process, I understand there's a possible question of a want to table. And my apologies for not being crystal clear on the parliamentary approach, but I do think we should entertain a motion, a second, and then a motion to table. But I'm happy, again, we have been somewhat loose with our Roberts rules. If it's okay by the board, by all means, feel free to make that motion now if you so choose.
I move to table the vote for approval of the amendment to the employment agreement of a particular individual.
Second.
Moved by Emily, second by Todd. Motion to table requires a majority vote of the board. And so it will be a vote, but prior to that, discussion, debate, dialogue? Anyone, that anybody, anything that anyone would like to say?
I mean, I think I probably already said it, but I will just reiterate that we, I'm grateful to, to folks for, for coming out today and for the number of requests. I do very much think that there was a very, very limited time and that it is important to be able to hear from our community and give those that wish to engage in dialogue a chance to do so. I don't consider this vote to be one of, on a critical timeline and with any urgency. So would support delaying it until, until we give ample opportunity to the community to be able to provide the feedback that they would like to.
Yeah, and I mean, I second that. I mean, I, I was surprised by the amount of emails that we got within such a short amount of time. I mean, it was, I believe it's over 100. I, I don't know.
I didn't count that.
No.
Over 100 emails?
It, it was a significant amount of emails in a short amount of time. And I think that there's probably more voices out there that we could hear from, that we could get insight from. And again, I'm not going to make my decision just based on a number of emails, but I think we have a responsibility to, to let people be heard. So to me, I think giving the vote more time is important and that's, you know, that's my position.
Normally I wait until the end, but I'll, I'll jump in now. And I completely understand the request and understand the number of communications that come our way, both in support and expressing other wants and wishes. One of the things that I, I don't want to say this. I want to be clear that while many in, some in the community, and I always say repeatedly, there are multiple communities in Ithaca, may not agree with what I'm about to say. In no way, shape, or form diminishes my want, desire, attempt to be as collaborative, to be a problem solver, to find and make our district the best possible that we can. We're also having a conversation about a personnel item and a personnel matter. And for me, I struggle with open forum on a personnel matter. There is no other job that I know of in Ithaca that would open up a public conversation about a personnel matter. And that is not to, again, diminish what I heard this evening. I try to be thoughtful. I try to be thinking about our community and recognize that while it's a public position funded with public tax dollars, we have a thousand public employees funded by public tax dollars that would not be afforded the same opportunity. So for me, part of the conversation is recognizing the privacy that we have for our employees and a process. And while some folks may feel that the process was a surprise to them, it has been part of an ongoing conversation. And so, that's my stance that, yeah, that's my stance. Any other board conversations, debate, discussion?
After the public comment, I, earlier, I did state that the challenge of someone having a contract where publicly it's being spoken about, yet I would wonder how many of us outside of working within the school district or anywhere else has, have the same conversation with public input. And I don't agree with my colleagues that it's been a short time because we've been in discussion over it. And I, I find it challenging at times to have public input like this when according to a policy, and I don't have the policy number at the moment, the, the position in question, I'll leave it at that, reports directly to the board. And I find it challenging to have input as a public and as if the public has the right and to overstep what the board input is. I appreciate comments. I appreciate public comments, but there is a right way to do certain things and I didn't find this to be that way.
Any additional board conversations? So the motion on the table is to table. It requires a majority vote to table this agenda item. And so, we will call the question. All in favor of tabling this agenda item? All opposed? Any abstentions? Fantastic, the motion does not pass. So we will then engage in the motion itself. And so, we will entertain motions of agenda item 11.5. Or non-motions?
Sorry, I'm trying to pull the motion up and, there, I have it. Sorry. Motion to approve the amendment to the employee agreement of a particular individual.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Erin, seconded by Karen. Debate, discussion, conversation?
I'm happy to jump in again. I would like to say that the contract in question is currently for another three years. I do not know what the specific needs of the district will be at that time. And therefore, I do not see the need to vote to extend a contract for reasons that are largely speculative in nature. for reasons that are largely speculative in nature. So I plan to vote no.
Additional comments, questions?
Yeah, I mean, I second that. And I have also planned to vote no. I do want to go on the record and say, I do have the utmost respect for you. And, you know, working with you, like, I recognize how difficult of a job it is. And I think, you know, even though I'm voting no, I think you deserve that respect from me. It's kind of the same thing, like me saying, like, hey, it's important for me to take accountability for, you know, the ITA negotiations. You know, I do appreciate the, you know, all that you do do for the district. You know, but to Emily's point, I don't think that this vote needs to happen right now. I think, I do think that it is being rushed. I do think that we have a responsibility not to base our vote on what the community says, but I think we have a responsibility to listen to the community. And I personally would like to hear more from, you know, teachers, from parents. I think it's imperative. And again, I would not base my decision based on that, but I think it's our responsibility to listen. So I, you know, I am going to vote no, you know, in the most respectful way, so.
Again, I normally wait to the end, but I will not, given the circumstances. My support for this contract resolution is in the stated resolution itself. So folks are wondering why it's there. The one thing I am extremely sensitive to, and from the communication that has come to me throughout the day, again, from folks who are both in support, and both folks who are asking us to wait, is while we are in the middle of ITA contract negotiations. That is not something that is lost on me at all. I recognize, both as someone said at one point in time, the optics of what that looks like. I'm very much aware of that. To our students who have said completely that they are in full support, that our teachers deserve a contract, I also support that completely. And my expectation, no matter what the outcome of this vote is, is that we will find a way to pay our teachers what they deserve. What that looks like is going to be part of the continued negotiations, and something that we'll probably have to visit as a board. I think I'm still a member who's able to observe at the negotiating table. But I pledge my support to make sure that we resolve this contract quickly and in a fashion that hopefully is agreeable to all. So that's the only, that's the one item that I wanted to speak to, is I recognize that notion, and I want to make sure I went on record and said that. Any other board points?
Yeah, so I have a particular interest in the fiscal health of this district. So I think it might be helpful to just go back and look at some numbers. We are looking at state rather tax levies that will fall within the tax cap, I think, for the foreseeable future. At least, that's how I read the will of the public. So that's going to be revenue increases with respect to the tax levy on the order of 2% to 3% for the foreseeable future. So the majority of our funds come from taxes, about 75%. And that share of our funds is looking to increase between 2% and 3% per year. The remainder of our funds come from state and federal sources. The state sources, it's unknowable right now, but are at risk. And the federal sources, you can all make your own determination. There's a lot of uncertainty facing the fiscal health of this district. And in response to that uncertainty, well, that's the revenue side. Let's look at the expense side. Our biggest expense is labor. Of our labor expense, teachers are the biggest expense. Rightly so. Teachers are asking for more pay. We want to say yes, they deserve it. Everyone knows that, there's no disagreement there. We want to pay teachers as much as possible. The ITA negotiations, looking at both sides, we've seen numbers from one side of 4% per annum, numbers from another side of just under 8% per year. Pick either one, 4, 8. It's a lot more than 2. So you can see the problem. If our revenue is going to grow at 2%, and our expenses are going to grow somewhere between 4 and 8, wherever we land in there, it's unsustainable, especially factoring in the uncertainty of state and federal funds. So what do we do? What we do is we restructure. We do the hard work, and we think strategically. And we look at our expenses, and how to minimize the expenses while maximizing the quality. That is what the public asked us to do. And in response to that ask, we've entered into a relationship with an external consultant, I can say that, Cornell University, which is conducting a demographic study to understand how many students will be attending which schools, are willing to be in which catchment area in, you know, the coming years. And based on that, we're going to take a hard look at our physical plant, and look at creative ways to restructure and be more efficient. Now, that process happens in school districts all across the country, all the time. And there's a lot of evidence of how that plays out. It's difficult. It's difficult because there's always some pain along the way. Just, it can't be done without some pain, and people being upset, rightly so. But that's where we are. We have to do that. That's the work of the board. The question then is, what kind of leadership consistency do you want to have while you undergo that process? Do you want to have uncertainty and turmoil, and searching for new leadership? Or do you want to have a team that is in place for a known period of time, with a known end? A team that has been experienced, and is not starting out? You look across the country, new leadership does not work well with this kind of strategic initiative. It has to be seasoned leadership. So if we want to sustain the fiscal health of this district, and engage in the tough conversations and the hard work of doing that, it is my view that we need to have a consistent leadership with a well-documented transition plan. What's in this motion is a date, and a plan for continuing the current leadership, ending it, and transitioning to new leadership at a known date. And part of the factor for that, part of the reason for the date, is the timeline allows us to conduct all of these processes, and to put into place the strategic changes that we need to put in place. You cannot ask a new leadership team to do that. Just can't. So in my view, either we're going to engage in that process to ensure the fiscal health of this district, or we're going to change leadership. But I don't think we can do those two things at the same time. And the process is a time-consuming one. We need to allow enough time for it to happen. And at the end of the process, the trend now across school districts is to have an overlap of leadership, where new leadership comes in, and works alongside existing leadership, so there's a smooth transition. It is for that reason that I will be supporting this motion.
Any other comments, discussion, questions from board members? Hearing none?
I guess just one point of fact, just that end dates on contracts, you know, just aren't absolute, and that end dates can be extended by future boards and future relationships, you know, that could happen. So I guess I just wanted to say that.
That's a fact, yep. Appreciate that. All right, hearing no other discussion points, we'll call the question. All in favor? All opposed? The motion passes. If you please, you can reserve your commentary. You can call me, you can write to me, you can write to other folks. That will conclude our meeting for this evening. We will see folks next week.